You gotta wait for that red bar to come up before you can go to full screen. Another one of those quirks.
We are gonna bring this special town meeting to order. If everyone could either shut off or silence your cell phones, we would appreciate it very much. To Clifford Crowlock, the resident of the town of Parsons Field in the county of York, state of Maine. Greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to warn and notify the inhabitants of the town of Parsons Field in said county and state. Qualified to vote by law in town affairs to meet at the town office at 634 North Road in Parsons Field. On Monday, the 28th day of April AD 2025, at 6:30 PM to act on Articles 1 through 5 set out as follows. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Are there any nominations?
I'm sorry, yes, to open the meeting?
Are there any nominations for moderator?
Moderator, yes. The gentleman right there with the distinguished mustache, Norm. Norm has always been so wonderful.
Norman Blake.
Norman Blake.
Is there a second? Would there at least be three people to willing to cast a ballot for moderator? Put it in the box, some paper, just have to write the nominee's name and put it in here. Thank you. I forgot your appointment sheet.
Oh, yeah, don't worry, we'll deal with it.
Okay. All right, we have three votes for Mr. Norman Blake.
I'll be gone.
You're on the spot.
Don't screw it up, no pressure on you though, don't screw it up. Yeah, I know this is your first time. Everybody get a place in the perch, let's see.
I think so.
Okay, for those who don't know, and I think seen over two thirds of their faces are familiar. My name is Norman Blake. I'm a migrant moderator from West Baldwin. And I think most of you have been to a town meeting before. A special town meeting runs the same way. We'll run things using the method set out by the Maine Moderator's Guide as promulgated by the Maine Municipal Association. They're the rules and procedures that have served towns like this for over two centuries. They work pretty well. Rather than explaining that too much more, we'll just crash ahead because I think, I think we've got a fairly civilized crowd here. If past experience is any indication. We'll move to Article 2. To see if the town will vote to authorize a select board on behalf of the town to enter into a three-year contract with a one-year extension clause through the bid process for collecting and hauling of solid waste and recyclable materials starting in July 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. David?
Just briefly, the only thing I want to say is this is an article that we would typically have our annual town meeting in September. We neglected to get it in there. We need it because our current contract is up in the middle of July.
What question, excuse me, Tom Winter here. You expect anyone else other than our current supplier? Don't know, just?
Don't know. They were the only ones that bid last.
I was gonna say, yeah.
We have a list of other trash haulers that we will send bid packages to. Yep.
Will the region that you're trying to locate a trash hauler be from within the five, six towns? David?
Not necessarily. They might get priority in the process when we're looking at bids, but not necessarily.
So you're going afar now?
Well, we did last time. I mean, as far as Portland, if you will, yeah.
Further questions, comments? Are we ready to vote on Article 2, the waste hauling contract? Here are no objection. All those in favor of Article 2 as presented, please raise your hand. Those opposed? The article is approved unanimously. That's good pen. Okay, Article 3. To see if the town will vote to change the wording in the Cannabis Facility Licensing Ordinance, Section 6, Paragraph A. Proposed change in bold. And since this is the actual legal article, I will bore you by reading it. And we are changing from the Select Board shall hold a public meeting within 60 days of receipt of a complete application as determined by the town clerk, remember that, town clerk. For the purpose of determining whether the applicant has satisfied all applicable licensing criteria as set forth in this ordinance, and if so, shall authorize the issuance of a cannabis facility license with or without conditions. At such a public hearing, the testimony of the applicant and that of any interested members of the public shall be taken. And we are changing from to the Select Board shall hold a public hearing within 60 days of receipt of a complete application as determined by the Select Board. And that's the change in bold, the Select Board. For the purpose of determining whether the applicant has satisfied all applicable licensing criteria as set forth in this ordinance, and if so, shall authorize the issuance of a cannabis facility license with or without conditions. At such a public hearing, the testimony of the applicant and that of any interested members of the public shall be taken. Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
A question. I need a second. Moved and seconded. Question? Yes, what's necessitating that? I understand there's, it's very complex. And there's, you know, great many, at least three people, three entities I'm aware of that are trying to, you know, establish a cannabis distribution growing, et cetera. So I just curious. I would ask a member of the Select Board to elaborate on their?
The changes, putting, changing the onus of determining, so we'll receive an application. There are several pieces that need to be submitted. As it's written today, the town clerk is responsible for determining whether an application is complete or incomplete. We're moving that onus from the responsibility of the town clerk, who will be receiving the application. And then now the Select Board will determine if the application is complete or incomplete. And then at that point, scheduling the public hearing.
Did I answer your question? Okay, I didn't, I'm sorry, I thought, so they will, in the amendment is they will schedule a public hearing or they could just schedule a public hearing?
Will.
Yeah, will, okay, very good. That's all, thank you for clarifying that, thank you very much.
According to what was just said, we're not voting on moving it from just the town clerk to make that decision. Where, where, are we voting on moving the Select Board to make that decision here or no?
It would so appear the Select Board?
Completeness of the application.
So the Select, so basically we're voting on the Select Board to be able to agree upon the completeness, completeness as opposed to just the town clerk?
Yes, completeness and, I am sorry. Somebody on the?
There's so many pieces, there's so many pieces to the application and there's a checklist and it's time constraint. And it makes it our responsibility for going through all of the material and making sure the application.
Determining whether there would be a requirement of a town hearing.
No, that's part of the ordinance already. Yeah, that's already in place.
No change to that. This is simply changing it, changing from town clerk to Select Board.
Thank you very much for clarification. That makes perfect sense.
Yes, sir. And isn't this just gonna slow the process down even more? Because now we have to have three people get together, look over this pile of papers and decide if it's complete or not. It seems like since we passed this well over four or five months ago, it was late last year before the holidays. The town's done nothing but drag its feet. And this seems to me, as a concerned citizen, that is, we're just putting another hurdle in front of the people who are trying to do what they're trying to do to make some money.
Select Board?
Well, we're not trying to put a hurdle in front of anybody. The issue is that the town clerk is not comfortable establishing completeness of the application. Whereas we, having drafted the ordinance, are much more familiar with it. Frankly, it didn't occur to us initially. That part was drafted by our attorney. Had we thought about it a little more, maybe we would have said initially that it would be the Select Board. And, I mean, we meet weekly, we have two workshops every week. It's gonna maybe slow it down a couple of days, if that.
Well, provided the three of you can agree that something's complete.
That's true.
So that's gonna potentially triple the amount of time. Because instead of having one person have a checklist and go, yep, 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 or, or no. Here you go, give me this and come back. Let's say you look at it and go, yep, this is complete. The guy in the middle goes, yeah, I'm not comfortable with the way this is put together and like the wording, it missed a period where it should have been a comma. And then it just slows the process down. We get into a whole nother large discussion where really, this should be boilerplate kind of stuff. This is a list, you bring us this, we go, yep, you're complete. We'll schedule the meeting, you know, 59 days from today because we want to draw this out as long as possible. And off we go. But instead, we're gonna have potentially a whole meeting of your time where you could be devoting it to other things. Discussing whether or not it's complete. And then, okay, well, we can't really decide it, I need to look at this more. We'll put it off another week or another two weeks. And then we got the 59 days. And it just seems like for something like this, the town spoke, let's get on with it and, you know, if they do what they're supposed to do, let them do what they want to do.
Response from the Select Board?
Reviewing the content would happen by this board anyway, so we're responsible for approving the application, so.
Well, I understand that.
Whether it's determined complete by the town clerk or by the Select Board, that review of content would need to happen. Complete, and so all of the boards, if you put an application before the planning board, the planning board determines completeness. If you put an application before the zoning board, the zoning board determines completeness. And so this is aligning with those other processes.
I understand that, but that's not what was originally written, and I think it was probably originally written that way to potentially streamline the process. Because again, you guys still have your voice when you decide whether or not to give someone a license. And you can make whatever decision you have based on that. A completed application is a completed application or it's not. You know, it doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't need to have three people decide. You know, it's a, it's a simple yes or no. You could go get the, you know, the third grade class at Sacagawea Elementary School to decide if everything is there, in my opinion.
I've seen a couple other handy.
Point taken.
I would just like to say that I've been to a number of the meetings. I could see from your point of view what, where you're coming from, what you're thinking. But what I observed as a towns person was the fact that, and as these are the people that represent the town and the whole people of the town.
Sure, absolutely.
And these are the people who know the legalities, who understand in great depth. I was really surprised by all with these permits, all that goes with it. And to put it in the hands of just one person who has so many other responsibilities and really isn't into it, but these people totally into it. I mean, they can quote from state laws and everything else. I mean, I was overwhelmed with it. I mean, I really did not know the depth of it. So from just as a towns person observing the process, I would rather put something that's important in the hands of people who are the ex, well, the experts, so to say. More expert than the one person to say, this potentially has a process of speeding up, any sort of thing. You're putting it in that, but they're looking at it and they're thinking of it globally in terms of the whole town, not in the terms of saying, oh, hey, I got a business proposition I would like to get through as quick as I can. I understand it. My family's in business for years, three different businesses in this area. Okay, so I get it, you want it, need to go quick, you need the money rolling in. But on the other hand, let's have people who are competent, know the laws, get it right, one way or the other. It's a process you go through step by step by step. I personally am much more comfortable having three people do it as opposed to the one. But that's just my point of view, but I do appreciate yours, so.
I see Cliff's got his hands in the air, I'll get you.
Yeah, I have a question. Once the board here sees this is complete, is that a done deal in terms of operations begin or is there a public vote?
No, so the completeness part starts the process of then we'll schedule a public hearing. And then after that, we would then determine approval or denial of the, of the permit. Yeah, so the completeness is literally like, like was said. Do we have the licenses? Do we know who's applying? Do we have all the forms that we require? And it's, it is that simple of a check. And so it should not be, you know, it's not a content, we're not drilling down into the content of it. It's just that we have the forms or have the paperwork that we need.
And we do have a?
Yeah, my point, Joy, that's mine. My point was going to be, isn't there a simple checklist?
Yes.
Sounds like that's what you're saying.
We do.
So the town clerk could do it. Is it just time constraints? Because?
Yeah, and that and an understanding of what goes into the checklist and what paperwork is submitted.
More public, too.
Yeah.
Yes, I would agree with my fellow citizen here to the left. I think the complexity of the current status of cannabis laws in Maine requires all the focus that we can provide and taking it to three other folks to investigate that. You know, if anyone's been following the planning board's issues, you know, you have lawyer battling lawyer, picking up details of, you know, this report's not right, that report's not right, blah, blah, blah. I think something like this necessitates something as the, you know, Select Board investigating it and, you know, being able to do a longer-term study that perhaps a town clerk may not have the time and resources to do. So to me, the more resources, the more eyes we can have look at the applications and so on, it makes perfect sense to me. Given the impact, long-term impact, when something is in place, you can't undo it. Further questions, comments on Article 3, the cannabis facility matter? Yes, sir?
Oh, I've got a question. If it's also time constrained, what, what do you guys expect is the turnover rate when somebody gives you an application? How soon would you turn it over?
For completeness, you should be able to turn it over the next time we meet. It's, completeness is not a in-depth dig into an application. It's just determining, do we have, you know, go through the checklist, determine what we have. You know, and there are, I can't remember the number, there's a significant number of items on the checklist to go through and make sure that they have it. But, yeah. I don't anticipate it would create any extra hurdles outside of the fact that the board, you know, meets once a week, which I can appreciate.
Yes.
Yeah, can you explain to me when it says the issuance cannabis facility license with or without conditions? There's no conditions, isn't there conditions? It says with or without. I don't like that.
Yeah, so you, so applications can be approved with or without conditions.
That's bullshit, isn't it?
The town voted to accept this.
Well, it depends on what they've, yeah, it depends on what they've spelled out in the application. They may have been very specific about some things, like we're gonna be open from noon until four o'clock. If they don't say that, they don't have any hours, we're gonna say, okay, maybe you can be open from 10 until four, or that would be a condition. I mean, it's a relatively simple thing. It's not, it's not meant, how do I say this? It is a restriction, but the licensing ordinance is restrictive enough in itself.
So will we see what the license looks like? I mean?
Once it's issued?
That there's, you know, no conditions, that's terrible.
Oh, I wanna, I wanna make sure you're not confusing. So when we say with or without conditions, without conditions means conditions on the application, not conditions on the business. The business would still have to follow all of the rules of the ordinance.
Right.
But the application conditions.
Okay, well, I guess the reason I bring this up and it's a sore subject is the sandpit that's over my way. There was no conditions, no nothing. And he's free to do just about anything he wants. He's got a few stipulations. That's got nothing to do with what we're talking about. I'm just saying this. It's an example that the town, no conditions on certain things and conditions on others.
The ordinance have, the ordinance is very specific about what needs to be done in order to obtain a license. And it's not just us, it's also the Office of Cannabis Policy that puts an amazing amount of restriction on what they can and can't do.
You have your head up.
Just clarification, I would assume that we're gonna speed this process up by skipping the obviously able town clerk. I want to make sure it realizes that they are very able to do this. But as you guys wrote the ordinance, that's one less stopgap these people have to go through. And then at the end, just like any other stop, they come along the way, planning board or so on, you can assess restrictions or conditions to make it as best it can within the ordinance for the community, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Yes, maybe you misinterpreted it a little bit, but I believe, you know, you can grant the license or permission with conditions, and those conditions could be that you upgrade the septic system, you upgrade, you know, various aspects, or is that? You know, I believe that's what the conditions are, rather than we won't even consider a license until you meet all of these things. Am I?
Correct.
Okay, because I think that's what many people may not understand. You know, you can grant a, I would say the license, but the license would be granted if, you know, you do this, do this, do this, and do this. And of course have it verified and so on.
Correct, they would need to meet the conditions before they'd be able to operate.
Okay, that's, yeah, I, okay, thank you for clearing that up.
Yep.
Any more questions, comments on Article 3, the cannabis matter? You all sat in the back? Okay, I will follow the strict legal interpretation and read the whole article again. Because that's what you're really supposed to do before you take a vote. So, and because this is kind of important, we'll go that way. Article 3 is to see if the town will vote to change the wording in the cannabis, oh, I should, are we ready to vote? Okay, Article 3, to see if the town will vote to change the wording in the Cannabis Facility Licensing Ordinance. Section 6, Paragraph A, proposed changes in bold. From, the Select Board shall hold a public hearing within 60 days of receipt of a complete application as determined by the town clerk, that's the bold print. For the purpose of determining whether the applicant has satisfied all applicable licensing criteria as set forth in this ordinance, and if so, shall authorize the issuance of a cannabis facility license with or without condition. At such a public hearing, the testimony of the applicant and that of any interested members of the public shall be taken. And you would be, if approved, you would be changing this to the Select Board shall hold a public hearing within 60 days of receipt of a complete application as determined by the Select Board, that's the bold print. The Select Board for the purpose of determining whether the applicant has satisfied all applicable licensing criteria as set forth in this ordinance, and if so, shall authorize the issuance of a cannabis facility license, whether or without conditions. At such a public hearing, the testimony of the applicant and that of any interested members of the public shall be taken. All those in favor of Article 3 as presented, please raise your hands. Those opposed? The article is accepted unanimously. Move on to Article 4, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to use funds in the municipal building reserve account for a new heating system and for the installation and hookup of the new propane kitchen stove. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Cliff? Oh, I thought you were gonna share something with, anybody wanna talk about the kitchen stove?
Why do we need a kitchen stove? Why do we need a kitchen stove, Select Board? David?
We have a kitchen stove that is not functional.
How old is it?
It would have been 1986. School was built. It is an electric stove, which our generator will not support. So we are looking at the possibility or the probability of using this as a shelter. And so we have purchased a gas replacement range, and that needs to be installed.
Okay, so we already own the stove?
We do.
So it's just a lawn ornament at the moment?
That is correct.
Excuse me, it's a new gym.
Yeah, it's a gym ornament.
We purchased that with ARPA funds, so at no cost to the town.
But didn't think to include the installation as part of those ARPA funds?
Some of them will be used, what we have left.
Yeah, ARPA funds will be used.
Okay.
They've already been obligated.
Yeah, that's already been authorized.
Okay, so in essence, we don't need to dip into the reserve, it sounds like.
Well, that's just for the stove.
No, I understand that, because there are two things. I understand a building decides you need heat, so we should install something to keep the people warm.
Right.
But when you say you want to make this a shelter, if there's two inches of snow, you guys don't open. So what kind of faith do we have as a community that it'll be available to use as a shelter?
I was gonna say, I have opened it for a center, not a shelter, but for a center when there has been more than two inches of snow. We've opened up on the weekends for warmth and charging. And that's what we do in emergency management.
The announcements that I see when it snows are, due to inclement weather, Parsons Field Town Hall will not be open. So again, it just begs the question, why do we need a stove? But again, if we already own it, it should certainly work.
I was gonna say, inclement weather is one thing, but power outages are another.
Yeah, yeah, long-term power outages.
Ice storm in 1998. Without the money, we're talking, David?
Good question.
We don't know, we're going out for bid, okay? We did receive a partial bid for replacement of the furnace with a propane furnace that totaled $50,000. Now, that doesn't include a lot of things, like there's asbestos abatement that needs to take place. There's running the gas line for both of these. And there were two or three other things that weren't part of that. So we are just in the process of going out to bid. I will say that the reserve account contains about $89,000. I believe that's before this year's contribution, which I believe was $15,000, if anybody can help me out there. Technically, the board can do this without coming to the people. We just felt it was a big enough amount that we would come to you, and so you would understand what we might be spending the money on. I mean, at this point, depending on what the bids are and how they look, we may not even do this. I mean, we'll have to get the stove installed regardless. The furnace is a little up in the air at this point.
But it could be possibly $60,000, is that what you're saying?
And I would guess that with the additional items that they didn't quote, it would be at least $70,000. That would, that's, that's a guess. I don't know what asbestos abatement is. I mean, there's asbestos on, on the old furnace and on the pipes out in the boiler room. It's intact, so if you don't do anything, you can leave it. But as soon as you disturb it, you gotta get it all out. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Oh, sorry. Is the stove self-cleaning and what color is it? Regarding asbestos abatement, I had experience with that with two older homes that we renovated here. One of the things that can be done is to enclose them even in sheet rock. Now, the law may have changed, but they may, you know, that if you're talking to an abatement specialist, he's gonna say, oh, no, we have to, you know, gown up and, you know, it's hazardous. But there is perhaps, I don't under, you know, I don't know the details of what you're dealing with, so please understand. Perhaps it can be easily, more easily, some of it can be more easily taken care of by just sheet rocking around it, you know, build a frame, sheet rock, blah, 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 and enclose it. That's all. And obviously, I don't care what color the stove is.
Okay, if I can, if I can just give a quick response to that. My only comment there is that commercial applications are different than residential. And my guess is it's gonna be required that it come out. But again, that's a guess.
Don't know. I understand. I just trying to.
Yeah, no, good points. Good points.
Further questions on the kitchen stove and the furnace? Here and now, are we ready to vote? Okay, Article Four, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to use funds in the municipal building reserve account for a new heating system and for the installation and hookup of the new propane kitchen stove. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Them as opposed? The article passes unanimously. Article Five is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Objection?
It's been moved and seconded. An article to adjourn is not debatable. All those in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand. Those opposed?
Are unanimous? Thank you, folks.
Being as adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you for the discussion.